With the Seminole Airport Authority, roll call.
Stephanie Lambert.
Here.
Bill Watlin.
Here.
Tim Poplin.
Here.
Dee Dee Patterson.
Here.
John Kramer.
Chris Anderson.
Larry Church.
Here.
Corey Crabtree. Shane Fisher. We have a forum.
Consideration, action, consent agenda.
Second.
Roll call.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Dee Dee Patterson.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the Airport Authority? If not, remove the current business, consideration and possible action to approve issuance of a letter of interest to the Oklahoma Aeronautics Commission for Airport Taxiway Renovations to be included in the Commission's fiscal year 2019-21 OAC Capital Improvement Program. Mr. Vice Mayor, this is a, this is not actually a commitment of funds, but rather getting us slotted into their funding program. They've been very good to us and we've got, lately, we've been posing some very big dreams with them and they're, they're right alongside with us. And in order to get us in the slot, we need to be sending them a letter of intent. Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Dee Dee Patterson.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Motion passes.
There being no further business for the Airport Authority, a motion to adjourn is in order. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. That brings us to the Seminole Gas Authority. Roll call, Jay.
John Kramer. Tim Poplin.
Here.
Dee Dee Patterson.
Here.
Bill Watlin.
Here.
Corey Crabtree. Stephanie Lambert.
Here.
Larry Church.
Sure.
Chris Anderson. Shane Fisher. We have a forum.
Consideration, action of consent agenda. Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Dee Dee Patterson.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the Gas Authority? If not, there being nothing on the agenda for the Gas Authority, a motion to adjourn is in order? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. That brings us to the Seminole Utilities Authority. Roll call.
Dee Dee Patterson.
Here.
John Kramer. Chris Anderson. Bill Watlin.
Here.
Corey Crabtree. Tim Poplin.
Here.
Stephanie Lambert.
Here.
Larry Church.
Sure.
Shane Fisher. We have a forum.
Consideration and action of consent agenda. Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Dee Dee Patterson.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the Utilities Authority? If not, there being no further business on the agenda, a motion to adjourn is in order? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. That brings us then to the City Council. Roll call.
Chris Anderson. Dee Dee Patterson.
Here.
Stephanie Lambert.
Here.
Larry Church.
Here.
Tim Poplin.
Here.
Bill Watlin.
Here.
Corey Crabtree. John Kramer. Shane Fisher. We have a forum.
Please stand for the invocation. Pledge of Allegiance. Prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited and just as for all.
God whose mercies cannot be numbered, accept our prayer of thanks for the city of Seminole and for all our people. Let us love one another, for you, God, our love. Amen.
Amen.
Consideration and action and consent agenda. Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Dee Dee Patterson.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Are there any appearances or petitions from the audience for the City Council? If not, then we will move to approvals and acceptances. Resolutions. Number one, consideration and possible action to approve Resolution 2018-10, a resolution declaring May as Fair Housing Month within the city of Seminole. This, I think, is on our agenda every year.
Every year, yes, sir.
Second. Roll call.
Dee Dee Patterson.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number two, consideration and possible action to approve Resolution 2018-11, a resolution approving the Seminole Main Street Association an epic to allow the sale and consumption of wine and low-point beer during Gusher Days festivities and the Mark Chestnut Concert on June the 2nd, 2018.
This is every year. Have we ever had a problem with that at all, Chief?
We haven't had, we've had a long time we didn't have Gusher Days.
And we didn't have alcohol at Gusher Days.
I move to approve.
Well, let's actually put it.
Roll call.
Dee Dee Patterson.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
We move to ordinances. Number three, consideration and possible action to approve ordinance number 1218, an ordinance amending Section 4210A to the City of Seminole Code of Ordinances Rabies Control.
What, Mr. Vice Mayor, what we're doing on the next two agenda items is updating our ordinances with regard to vicious animals and dangerous animals, giving a little bit more teeth in our ordinances and some discretion to our officers and our animal control authorities. This particular ordinance basically requires, it's kind of a, it's a little bit different. We modified it slightly from our existing ordinance on rabies control. If you're familiar with how an animal is tested for, for rabies, that animal has to be quarantined for approximately 10 days, I believe, and you correct me if I'm, I'm wrong, Rose, but basically if the owner of that animal refuses to surrender that animal and this animal has bitten someone or exposed someone to rabies or another animal, we need the ability, our officers do, our animal control people, to take that particular animal into custody and do what we need to do. And so we've, we've experienced an incident where we've, we've had a particular vicious animal that did bite another person. The owner was very uncooperative and we could not take the chance of exposing or having that person go through a series of painful rabies shots, as everyone knows that's done through the stomach. And so we finally were able to, to get that worked out with the owner. It took a lot of, you know, a lot of work, hard work, to get that done, but we're not going to do that anymore. We're asking you to approve this ordinance that will give our officers and animal control people the authority to take an animal into custody and do what is ever necessary to test that animal, especially if it's bitten someone else and it's suspected of having rabies. So, and even if it's not suspected, if it does not have a rabies vaccination, then it's going to have to go through that process. So that's what this is all about. And we're asking the emergency ordinance be approved.
So in the end, the vet makes the final decision on it?
Yes, the animal is taken into custody, hopefully with permission of the property owner, the animal owner, and that, I believe that's taken to a local veterinarian. They can, is that?
So the five-day hold, I'm sorry, the 10-day hold is an Oklahoma status for maintaining control over rabies. They can do multiple things. Our ordinance currently state that you can choose to harbor your animal for 10 days in veterinarian if you're choosing, or we can board it at the shelter for 10 days and we can quarantine the process to uphold. In the situation that we have here, we were unable to do that. The only other way to have a legitimate testing for rabies is beheading the animal and sending the head of the animal into the Department of Health in Oklahoma City. In this instance, we did, but the hold is under the owner's expense, whether they'd like to go to a veterinarian or our staff who is trained to handle concerns with rabies to mandate and what we need to control it.
So, in the extreme, I guess, without sugarcoating this, in the extreme, that animal can be, you know, destroyed and, and samples obviously sent to the Department of Health, so.
When, 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 excuse me, when we have an animal that attacks somebody, what we try to get the owner to do is we try to get the owner to quarantine the animal. Now, that's generally done, head of veterinarian, at the owner's request, or the owner's expense. We do run into owners that are just uncooperative, they just basically tell us to pound sand, they won't fall off right quick in any way. In extreme cases, and it's rare, but in extreme cases, you do have to euthanize the animal. The only known way to test that animal is euthanization, you have to euthanize the animal. If we, if we go to that extreme measure, which is rare, it's extremely rare, but if we have to, that is done by a veterinarian. We take him to a veterinarian and the veterinarian does the whole process. Like I said, that is extreme and that's only if we cannot get the owner to cooperate. In the case that, that Rose is talking about, if I recall, this was a Rottweiler.
It was a 90-pound Rottweiler mix that had.
That was very vicious. We couldn't board it at the Humane Society because nobody could get near the dog. Okay? I mean, they couldn't feed it, they couldn't do anything.
We couldn't get the dog out of the vehicle. The, the dog broke through my steel metal box instead.
So it's a rare case that we would ever have to euthanize it, but it can happen if they're uncooperative.
Bottom line, this is a process that gives us the ability. It, it just clarifies the ordinance and sets forth a process that is unambiguous.
Quick question, Vice.
Yeah.
If, if they have an updated rabies, it's all good, right? That doesn't, okay, that's all I need to do.
Now, but I, but I will, I will say that, just know that if, if the dog even had a, a good vaccination and attacked someone, it's still subject to the vicious animal ordinance, which is the second thing you're going to look at here tonight.
Move to approve. Second. Roll call.
Dee Dee Patterson.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Three A, consideration and possible action to approve the emergency clause associated with the ordinance just passed. Move to approve. Second. Roll call.
Dee Dee Patterson.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number four, consideration and possible action to approve ordinance number 1219, an ordinance amending Section 425 to the City of Seminole Code of Ordinances Disposition of Dangerous and Vicious Animals.
This is the one that's, it's self-explanatory. In the event that a vicious animal cannot be acquired for safe impoundment and under exigent circumstances, this gives our law enforcement and animal control people the authority to, to kill the animal. And again, exigent circumstances. It's not a carte blanche where you just, I mean, it's got to be a certain situation that would, that would prohibit them from taking that animal into possession. The second part is real simple. It gives us the ability to seek an order from the municipal judge to take a, an animal that has been declared vicious by its actions into custody. It's an ex parte order, a one-sided order by the judge, so that we can take that animal into custody if, if it is vicious. And that's, that's immediately, that's going to the judge saying, we need, you know, this has happened, this animal's vicious, it's bitten someone, we either can't get a hold of the property owner, the property owner won't let us have it, we need to take this animal into custody. It's just the process for doing so.
So that wraps everything up about vicious animals?
I think it, I think it does.
Tightens it up. I don't know. They're still out there.
Just put a little bow on it. Okay. Well, I move to approve.
Second. Roll call.
Dee Dee Patterson.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number four A, consideration and possible action to approve the emergency clause associated with the ordinance just passed. Second. Roll call.
Dee Dee Patterson.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Moving on to current business. Number five, consideration and possible action to approve allowing the Seminole Humane Society to implement a fee schedule for trapping and disposing of wild animals within the city of Seminole.
Question. Who are they going to charge?
The, the owner that's, that's requesting the trap.
It's on city property?
Oh, no. No, no. This is, we've got many of them that are, I, I don't know, frequent flyers is not a fair term, but they, they request them six weeks or eight weeks out of the summer, particularly over on Morningside Drive around Dee Dee and several others. And it's a, it's a real work issue, manpower issue for the Humane Society, so they've requested that they be allowed to charge a little something for them, so we're talking about the.
It's probably not always that they can identify the owner on some of those instances.
Are we talking about, are you, are you talking about domestic animals that end up in the trap? Oh. No, no. What we're talking about is, is mainly skunks, possums, raccoons, you know, some household cats, of course, we're not.
Some of those are meaters pets for some people, depending on what they are.
That caller.
A dog would be charged with running at large.
Right. They're going to be, if we find the owner, of course, they'll be charged with.
The person that calls and asks to be trapped is to be the one that will have the charge?
The resident? Yes, yes. Now, if, if they're, if they've got a cat problem or something to that effect, that might be a little bit different because if it's not their animals, we can talk that over with the Humane Society. That's really kind of what we're about, is controlling the domestic animals. So the, the wild animals are the ones that are most intrusive right now.
Do they have an idea what the fee will be?
Yes, sir. That was in your packet. I don't think you got that.
So if I want someone to, can I trap them myself?
Yes, sir. Okay. So here's what we're proposing. A one-day trap rental with the bait is $15. A five-day trap rental with bait is $25. Disposal fee per animal is $15. Okay? So if, if we set it for five days, we catch five possums, you're going to owe the $25 plus five times 15. Roger? So the, the maximum disposal fee, fee per week is $25. So even though we're saying per animal, $15, we're not going to charge you more than 25 on the disposal. A refundable trap deposit, if you're using the Humane Society's trap, you've got to give them a $25 deposit. We've had several disappear over time, so I don't know if it was a really big animal or the people just don't return it. We're only doing it Monday through Friday, the trap rental, let's see, down here, personally own traps. If you own your own trap, we will come dispose of, of a wild animal that's trapped there for you for $15, so.
You can eat them yourself.
And then if you want it done on the weekend, that's a little bit different. We're going to charge, we're going to allow them to charge $50 for a weekend call.
I'm looking for a way out of an expense for someone that wants to eliminate the wild animal problem on their own. Is there a, if you live in town or you're just stuck with having to pay to get rid of the skunk in your neighborhood?
Only to dispose it, right?
Yeah. If, if you've got your own trap and you want us to dispose of it, there would be a small charge, $15.
How would I dispose of it?
I can neither confirm nor deny that there's a way to do that.
I could do it with a mouse.
If you own the trap yourself, you can take the animal out into the country and open the trap and release it.
Oh, boy, that'll be powerful.
Take it out in the country and hit it on the head.
Don't let them catch you doing it, though.
All right. Okay, I get it. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second. Roll call.
Dee Dee Patterson.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number six, consideration and possible action to approve the removal of bricks on Broadway Street from Milt Phillips East to Fourth Street as part of the ODOT State Highway 270 Reconstruction Project. Yes, sir. This is.
270 is a US highway, isn't it?
I believe you're right. This is a follow-up to the public hearings and other discussions that we've had. The ODOT called and said, hey, we just want to confirm before we start work that you guys are okay with us tearing up the brick. We went back to the minutes. We actually didn't see that you guys had approved that. I think it was discussed at length, but, so we decided to go ahead and put this on the agenda for your approval to go ahead with the, the project that we've been discussing for some time. For the audience, the, the project that we're discussing is effectively from the college along Bourne Boulevard. It makes the big turn onto Broadway and will, will continue from Broadway all the way to the bus station. And it does include removing the bricks only on Broadway Street. So in effect, right in front of Bumpy Brick and, and Bank First, those bricks will be removed.
Resurfacing.
And resurfaced, obviously.
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Dee Dee Patterson.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Yeah, well, my bad, pass.
We're kind of straight through town now.
Yep. They're going to four-lane it. Number seven, consideration and possible action to approve allowing the Family Resource Center to use the community room for its summer camp from June 4th through June 28th at a reduced rate of $400.
This is the same we've always charged.
It's always been on the agenda. Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Dee Dee Patterson.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number eight, consideration and possible action to approve waiving the $5 residential garage sale fee during the annual Citywide Garage Sale Weekend Event hosted by the Seminole Producer, who will set and announce the event dates. Garage sale permits will continue to be required during the event, but at no charge. Move to approve.
We do that every year.
Yeah.
Second. Roll call.
Dee Dee Patterson.
Yes.
Stephanie Lambert.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Bill Watlin.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Move then to report. City Manager? Yes, sir. I just want to, to point out that you guys are sitting in very nice new chairs. Even though she didn't spend her money, it's the people's money, Sharon Emmett is the reason that you have new chairs, so she, she fought for it in the budget last year and got this passed so you guys could sit in a little bit more comfortable deal. I don't know, I think those chairs were used when we started using them 15 years ago, so you'll also see some upgrades for the television network. They'll be adding cameras here in the near future. I want to welcome Ryan Pitts. Mr. Pitts is a candidate for associate, Associate District Judge, and to my knowledge, he's never filed a lawsuit against the city of Seminole. So, hey. That's a big plus. All right. I want to, we already talked a little bit about Gusher Days. Sherry, thank you so much for what you're doing and putting all that work in and get it off the ground. Good job. Roy Streets, we didn't get to talk to you much, but thank you for what you do at the Family Resource Center. It's a, a big deal. And I'm sorry, I. Brandy. Okay, Brandy. Okay, welcome. We're glad to have you. Don't forget to buy your tickets early and often for the Mark Chestnut Concert at Gusher Days. We've got room for, what, 3,000 or so, and they're going to sell pretty quick. That's a big name coming to town. Just so happens, we're also going to have other live music in town that day. I think we've got a reggae band coming in from Dallas. Is that right?
Yes. Saturday night starting at 8:00.
8:00 Saturday night. They'll also have a reggae band downtown across the street from the Bumpy Brick on Second. The airshow, I mean, we've got so many things happening with the Gusher Days. I appreciate our staff really going out of their way to try to make everything comfortable and make sure that we've got security in place to do all that work and be sure and frequent the vendors while they're here for Gusher Days, and that's all I have. City Attorney? Council members, all I have to say is to the staff and employees of the city of Seminole, as always, thank you for all that you do.
as always, thank you for all that you do. We are blessed. We really are.
No question.
You need to go to some other communities and see how blessed we are.
I can back that up. Once upon a time, I used to sell a product to cities and towns and that required me to attend city council meetings. Sometimes the officer present had to get in between people trying to hit each other, things like that. I'm glad that I moved to Seminole and glad to be here and see how much cooperation there is between the city and the public. And as I've mentioned before, if Mama's not happy, nobody's happy. But it turns out that it's good for us to keep Mama happy. I passed out a little thing just for the audience to read. Also, it transcribes or transfers over to, they're discovering that corporations who have more female members on the board or as CEOs are, turn out to be more profitable and productive than corporations that do not. It's just a resource that we're in a good position to cultivate, women and girls. Thank you.
Word two, Stephanie Lambert. Word three, Tim Poplin.
Might be real short. I think we definitely saw fruits of the labor over our flood program last week when we had those big rains. Of course, the park always gets underwater. There's no way you're going to keep that, but we definitely saw, you know, cleaning of the bridges. I mean, it, I drove down through there right after it happened and then an hour later and it just kept coming up, but it stayed in its bank. So that's, that's kind of two tests that we've had on.
That's right.
Kudos for that and, you know, it, it was very expensive, but fruits paid off. I appreciate all the city workers that we had that helped do all that and they're overseers. But yeah, it was a great job. Thanks.
Word four, Dee Dee.
This is my nineteenth year, nineteenth year on the council, but I'm going to praise the man that's been here for twenty years. And I, every chance I get this year, I'm going to tell you who it is and you're going to be happy he's here because he's done a wonderful job. And that's our city manager, Steve Sexton. You're in your twentieth year.
Average life of a city manager is two years or something like that.
That's right.
You don't hear of that. Twenty years.
No, that's hard to come by. That's right. Thank you for having me.
There being no further business, a motion to adjourn is in order.
Oh, I have one question, if I may. Is there any feedback on the swimming pool at this time?
Great question. Uh, we met on that a little bit today, a little bit yesterday. The, the direct answer is we've got some tentative plans that are going to require a vote of the people to build a new water facility, a new swimming pool facility. We're trying to narrow down the location. I think you guys heard a lot from the, the guy, the consultant that you hired. We know that the price range is going to be between three point five and five million. I've been actually working with people that might partner with us on such a project and see if we can't defray some of the cost of doing that. It's, it's difficult for me as a manager to look at it and I have to explain it to Jay because he's a little tight-fisted with money. You know, how are we going to afford to spend five million dollars for eighty-two days per year? And that's, that's really tough. So we're trying to come up with some different plans that might more, might be more palatable to you all and, and to the public to get behind and, and vote it through. So we, we're, we're working on the plan. I, I think it's going to be one that you'll say, wow, in the end. And if it comes out just right, I think you'll be very, very pleased.
All city projects and stuff can't pay for themselves.
True.
And looking at the service that it provides, you know, a swimming pool is one of those and it's one of those things that I'm hopeful that will, there'll be a way that's affordable for low-income families to bring their children to the pool. And yes, it's going to cost more than we're going to get back from it, but that should be anticipated. And thank you for your efforts and thanks for the report.
You bet.
Motion to adjourn is in order.
Show and move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.